Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, September 28, 2023. Can I get a roll call, please, Mr. Banano?
Is your green light on?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Tsai?
Here.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins? Mr. Jackson? Ms. Maris? Ms. Shabon? Ms. Singh?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. La Court?
Here. We have quorum. So for the record, Lori has it back to school night and Walter has a situation at home. Can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Bill, can you read the mission statement, please, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance when you're done with that?
Hold on, Nancy. Mission Statement of the Franklin Township Public Schools. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. And if you could lead us in the pledge? It switched us. It switched by us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little poetic license in the agenda and I'm going to move up our presentation for the Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation first. Mary? Yeah, I want to do this first.
One. There you go. The Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation, a not-for-profit corporation, was founded in 2019 by a group of parents, former educators, representatives of the Franklin Township Education Association, Franklin Township Administrative Supervisor Association, Franklin Township Public School Administration, and the Board of Education, who were interested in enriching education in the district by providing additional resources to support innovative and inspiring programs. You'll see by the names listed here that some of those that started out the foundation, or revamped the foundation, I should say, were retired educators from our district. The Assistant Superintendent, the former Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Charlotte Weisner is currently the chair, and the founding chair when we first restarted the education foundation was Phyllis Bruno, who was retired director of Social Studies for the district. The current trustees include parents, board members, heads of association, teachers, and as well as the officers. Part of the foundation's purpose is to provide grants to teachers for innovative programs that aren't necessarily covered in the district budget. And one of those groups that had applied for a grant was the Junior Classical League. Jen Jones, who's the very enthusiastic advisor from that group, had back-to-school night at the high school today, so she invited Emma Casaball, if I said your name right, one of her students, you can say, correct me when you come up, to speak about the program that she's in and maybe a little bit about the trip that the grant-funded part of through swag and fun stuff that they bought.
Go ahead.
Hello, or Salway. Today I'll be talking about the Junior Classical League of Franklin High School's national trip to Louisiana during the summer of 2022. Schools were finally reopened and Nationals was back. For JCLers... Oh, sorry. So, do you want me to restart?
Let me just say, you can start from the beginning again, and I'll just make that a little closer.
Talk right on. Thank you. Hello, or Salway. Today I'll be talking about the Junior Classical League at Franklin High School's national trip to Louisiana during the summer of 2022. I know that was a mouthful, but schools were finally reopened and Nationals was back. For JCLers, Nationals is a time of summer to meet friends, challenge yourself in new things such as athletics, arts, and academics, to learn leadership skills, and geek out about your favorite Greek fable. Nationals also gives Latin students new opportunities and so many lifelong memories. That summer and the recovery of COVID-19 pandemic, New Jersey sent 15 students and eight of them were Franklin. This is only possible because of the grant we were given. Due to the generosity of the Board of Education, so many kids were able to expand their JCL and Latin passions and meet so many more enthusiastic peers to collaborate and befriend. For that, I am truly grateful and proud to call myself a Latin student and JCLer. Thank you, or as we say in Latin, gracias, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you.
Another recipient of a grant from the foundation from the high school was the Aspects of Video Program. On June 9, the Aspects of Video Program highlighted the next generation of creators by hosting the 19th Annual Aspects of Video Awards. The award show, similar to the Oscars, featured student-produced videos by the Aspects of Video classes. These students are exposed to the television and film industry by learning how to tell stories using multimedia skills through classroom instruction. The Aspects program gives students real-life experiences working in television studio, where they are able to serve as student producers, directors, editors, and videographers. Over the years, the program has grown with students attending and graduating from many prestigious colleges and universities majoring in film and television. These schools include NYU, Drexel, Montclair, and Howard University. Many of these students are currently working in the film and broadcasting industry. Another recipient of a grant was the Race and Gender Equity in America Program. On April 18, 2023, Franklin High School students met with Mr. Amal Sana to discuss mass incarceration prison systems in New Jersey and issues surrounding prisoners in New Jersey to better understand the progress that is being made in our communities in tackling systemic issues. Franklin High School Principal Dr. Solomon and the Supervisor of Equity and Instruction, Mr. Darren Plummer, also attended the meeting. Students were proud of the accomplishments Mr. Sana and his teachers and his team of civil rights attorneys have made for fighting for social justice. On this slide, you'll see some thank you notes from the students who were in the program. The next set of grant awardees were given to the Franklin Middle School at Hamilton Street Campus. In year one, the foundation gave four awards to various clubs, and in year two, another four awards. Some of the highlights of them were the Franklin Middle School at the Hamilton Streets Campus, Anami and Manga Club, Manga Club, was created three years ago. The project goal was to benefit manga, literature, and art supplies for the club, which benefited and still benefits club members in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The club closely aligns with Asian culture and ELA and social studies grade level standards. The project supported the social-emotional needs and development of our middle school students by allowing them to express themselves through world arts, literacy, and cultures, both during and after pandemic times. Another recipient from Franklin Middle School at the Hamilton Street Campus was the Hamilton Street Campus Schoolwide Book Club. The grant helped those buy the books so all students at HSC could read El Defo during Read Across America to celebrate literacy. It was a great community builder for our school. El Defo is a graphic novel written and illustrated by C.C. Bell. The book is a loosely autobiographical account of Bell's childhood and her life with deafness. It is the story of a student with hearing loss and a hearing aid who becomes a superhero. Another group that benefited from the foundation's awards at Hamilton Street Campus was the TREP Entrepreneurial Club, which had applied for a color printer and supplies. The color printer supported the multiple teams and students in this club. It engaged students because the displays were now more aesthetically pleasing. Students would stop in the hall during class, between classes, and take time to view the displays. Students in this club were also proud to see their work displayed in color. The Hamilton Street Campus was also the benefit of an award which purchased stress and fidget items. In a post-pandemic society, our students are learning to succeed in school while also learning to manage difficult emotions. Since returning to in-person learning, our school counselors and deans have been working closely with students to develop effective coping skills to manage their mental health while instituting strong emotional, social-emotional learning program for all students. The ideas, the items from this grant helped us to create a safe space where students have access to a variety of sensory items to assist them in developing their emotional regulation. The team was able to create five of the kits shown in the picture there to provide resources to students in all counseling offices, the SAC office, and the dean's office. Hamilton Street Campus was also the beneficiary of the ESL Scholastic Book Fair books. By providing ESL students with Spanish-language books, the person who applied for the grant hoped to encourage their students to enjoy reading by offering them access to books that reflect Latino culture, language, and identity in a thought-provoking, positive, and entertaining way. Finally, the HSC campus also applied for and was awarded a multimedia digital apps using QuickCut. This grant helped our students to experience how to create a product from start to finish. QuickCut was ordered instead of the silhouette machine, as the second was out of stock. The device was used to create a production experience for students in multimedia eight classes, as students created projects such as brands, logos, and decal stickers, and applied it to many products of their choice. You'll see in those photos that the students were able to create those stickers and put them on their Chromebooks. Next was Elizabeth Avenue School, who in year two was awarded three different grants for the Quiet and Cozy Reading Nook, Inclusive Science Lab, and Multicultural Night Festival. The EAS Library sought the Warrior Grant to create a reading nook to provide students with a quiet place where they needed to process emotions. This promoted SEL skills and reading skills for our students and gave them a safe place that they could go when they needed it. With the grant, the teachers involved purchased beanbags, book baskets, posters, and timers for the area. They relocated some of these resources into the guidance office to combine with what their guidance counselor was already utilizing for a quiet, calming corner with books and alternative seating. The EAS Inclusive Life Science Lab project allowed all young scientists at EAS to connect to life science. The grant provided age-appropriate models and specimens of living things for hands-on exploration of the science lab. And finally, for EAS, the Multicultural Night Festival. This event celebrated the diversity of ethnicities and abilities that exist at EAS. The night was full of performances, crafts, and food from around the world. The EAS community celebrated and had an excellent time, and they were looking forward to having the event again. At Franklin Park School, the school was awarded one grant in year one and one grant in year two. The first grant was for self-published books. The project was having the first-grade students create their own books. This whole process gave them a sneak peek of what it would be like to be a published author. They had to go through the process of writing a rough draft of their paper, revising it, and then writing it neatly so that it could be shared with everyone. The students felt accomplished that they had done what they had done with their books and loved sharing them with their family and friends. Also at Franklin Park, another project recognized Readers of the Month. This project recognized all of the wonderful readers at Franklin Park School. Each month, one student from each class was recognized as the Reader of the Month. Each student received a new book, certificate, medal, and bookmark. It was amazing to see the students' faces light up as they were recognized for all their reading achievements. At Hillcrest, they used their grant monies to go outside. First, they established an outdoor classroom. The goal of this project was to utilize the outdoor classroom space and engage students in authentic life science experiences. Their students loved being outdoors. They enjoyed walking over the bridges, along the creek, and seeing and hearing wildlife. The grant money was used to purchase flexible seating options for their young students to sit with nature, make inquiries and observations, and relax. The bucket served as a great tool for carrying supplies outdoors and were an ideal seat as well. The Hillcrest School Garden Club was the beneficiary the next year. The beautification committee started out with a small project four years ago, created a butterfly garden to brighten the students' faces when they walk into school. Their project was a huge success. The following year, they decided to include the students in their fun. The garden promoted a peaceful place for students to learn and work together. They began focusing their attention on other areas around the school to help make their elementary school a warm and inviting place to grow, learn, and to share in a school community. Pine Grove Matter won two awards in year two, the STEM Science Lab and a Quiet Reading Nook. The STEM Science Lab, students are able to engage in more STEM encoding opportunities. STEM activities were given to students in the science lab and after school using the materials from the grant. And now, it's time for McAfee, so I can stop speaking. And Principal Karen Adams and her team is here to speak about what the grant money meant to their school.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Joining me this evening at the podium, we have a team, well, a small part of our team, but we do have a team. We have Mrs. Tal Harram, who is our special education teacher. We have Ms. O'Connor, who is our math AIS teacher, and Ms. Motar, who is our reading AIS teacher. And we're here to talk about our two projects that we worked on this year. But first, we do want to thank you all for your generosity. It really helped us to have an exciting experience this year. Starting first with the Battle of the Books. Battle of the Books came about by just myself and initially the librarian having a conversation about what can we do to make reading a little bit more exciting. And so she met with our growing, growing a garden of readers committee, and we were able to recruit 47 students to engage in some extra reading. And what happened here was that they all had to read the same types of books. And at the end of the experience, after they read, and we started out with grades four and five, we had a competition. So what you see on the screen are 47 of our students, and then on the bottom, the setup of our competition. It was a great afternoon of family engagement. We invited parents. We invited, I think, grades three, four, and five students, so they were part of the audience. So it really turned into a game show atmosphere. And I believe on the next screen, wait, oh, no, no, no. Do we have a video there? I don't know.
Oh, no, I had to cut the video.
Oh, you cut the video? Okay. All right. See, she cut the best part. It's okay. All right. So we had a great time. So basically, the students had questions from the text. They consulted with each other. We're a group. We all read the same books. A question is posted. We hit the buzzer. Some of us knew the answers of certain books. Some of us knew the answers of other books. But the bottom line was, we worked as a team to celebrate reading, and they really had a great time. So we're looking forward to trying that again, and this time expanding it to include our third graders. The parents had a great time, lots of suspense and excitement. We didn't expect that, but it was fun and it did promote some extra reading, and the kids really had a great time. We had a nice cross-section of students. So we had boys, we had girls, we had strong readers, we had kids in between, kids who were still striving to, let's say, reach grade level standards with reading, but they all felt that it was a fun way to engage in reading. So that was the McAfee Battle of the Books, and we're going to expand that and do that again. So I'm going to allow, take it away, Mrs. Tal Harram, to talk about the next part.
Do you want me to move to the courthouse?
Oh.
You want me to talk about that?
Okay. Okay, so I'll do. Okay, so our next project started with our Sustainable Jersey Juniors Club. So we have a club of students that focus on recycling and helping us to achieve, you know, our award that we did get for Sustainable Jersey Juniors. So what we worked on this year was expanding our outdoor instructional space with our courtyard. And so the grant money was used to purchase what you see pictured on the screen, rakes, soil, seeds, everything, gloves, everything that we needed to really clean up our courtyard. So you see the beginning, the middle, and you'll see the end product. We were able to get Jersey cares to come and help us to wrap up the part that when we ran out of money. But, you know, they helped us out, you know, just recently in August. But we did put the garden, cleaned up the garden, we put the garden to bed. We had a great time doing that. And then the next part of the project, I'm going to now turn over to Mrs. Harram to talk about. So.
There you go. So hello. Sorry, I'm like pretty short, sorry. So I... So I got involved with the Greenhouse Garden Project at McAfee Road School. I was a student teacher. I ended up being this lovely woman, Susan Zega, her student teacher, and I ended up being her paraprofessional as the years went on, and then I became her co-teacher. And she is the reason why I am continuing this amazing garden greenhouse project, because she had kind of given me the hope and courage to kind of expand what it is to, you know, enjoy the environment and enjoy plant life and have the students really see what it's all about. So with the years of COVID, unfortunately, we kind of had to put the garden and the greenhouse on hold. And I don't know for those who know, but Susan Zega, she actually retired last year, and I just thought it was absolutely insane for us to let the garden greenhouse go. So I decided to get a big group, including these two, and Ms. Adams, on a Saturday, to clean up the garden, and we just kind of took it apart. And from there, we went from planting a bunch of fruits and vegetables. My special education students were able to experience that planting stage. We monitor growth. We, every day during science, we came out with our observation logs in our greenhouse and kind of just took data throughout the time of those plants growing. And as you can see in the slides, the amazing growth that happened, and they were ecstatic to see all of that. That in itself just made teaching worthwhile. So as you can see, there's a lot of different pictures, but as it goes on, you will end up seeing that we ended up having a very successful summer and a very successful summer picking of our harvest. We had pumpkins and tomatoes, cucumbers, butternut squash, watermelons, zucchinis, carrots. We had so many things that we were able to grow, and not only grow, but we were able to actually give back to our community as well. So overall, it was just an amazing experience, and I think it's really good for not only special education students, but for general education students, just to see what that, you know, what gardening is all about and how we can give back to the community. So, yeah, I'm very thankful that we were given this grant, because I was able to also enjoy a new hobby as gardening. So thank you very much. I don't know if there's... Is there another one? Nope. Okay. So that's it from McAfee Road School, and we thank you. Thank you very much.
I would now like to invite Reverend Dr. Katina Jackson, the vice chair of the foundation, to say a few words about their work.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Dr. Katina Blackman Jackson, vice chair of the Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation, and I stand proud to represent the founding chair, Phyllis Bruno, current officers chair, Charlotte Weisner, secretary Lori Friedman, and treasurer John Felix, as well as the trustees Cory Cohen, Linda Darby, Nina Jordan, Nancy La Court, president of the Board of Education, Dan Mayer, president of the FTEA, Dr. John Ravalley, superintendent Dr. Lee Schneider, Dr. Nicholas Solomon, president of the FTSA, and trustee Ellen Wren. The Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation provides the teachers at the Franklin Township Public School District with additional resources to support innovative and inspiring programs for their students. The foundation seeks to enhance the learning opportunities of students by supplementing the curriculum through grants that provide resources that could not be funded through the Board of Education budget. All proceeds go directly to teacher grants to fund innovative projects. Whether you join us for golf, dinner, or provide a sponsorship, you are having an impact on the educational experiences of one of our shining stars of our future. And I am very pleased and proud to share that we have done some amazing work because of our community's support. In 2022, nine teacher grants were awarded totaling $4,300. In 2023, 14 teacher grants were awarded totaling $6,300. Projects can be big, small, simple, and/or complex, with the primary focus for teachers to creatively connect with their students. What was the impact of your donation? Well, I'm so glad you asked me the question. We know you didn't have to answer the call, but you did. And because of you, the Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation annual golf outing that we planned for June 26, but Mother Nature had different plans, even though we moved our outing to July 17, our event was a huge success. Over $23,000 was raised for teacher grants. Therefore, over 800 teachers will have the opportunity to apply for our FTWEF teacher grants of $500 each to provide their students with out-of-the-box teaching. Our teachers have thought outside of the norms. Previous grants have opened the doors for our students to learn, and therefore, 7,200-plus students have the opportunity through our teacher grants to delve deeper into reading and writing, including visits from authors. They read and publishing their books, business, and sparking their entrepreneurial passions, social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion, science projects, including creating gardens, which we just heard from the wonderful McAfee team, and even, yes, let's clap, you all are very inspiring. I'm inspired. And even the Junior Classic League at the high school, Emma, you rocked. You did an excellent job, and we can't wait to see what's next. What will the next grants be? We don't know. And yes, let's clap for Emma, because you did an awesome job, Emma. You know I love you, sweetie. You know I love you. What will the next grants be? We don't know. But whatever they are, they will surely spark the minds of our talented students, and you have been a part of this, and you made it happen. To the community, we solicit your support to affect positive change, make your... To the community, we solicit your support to effect positive change, make your mark, create a lasting impression, and leave a legacy by enriching the education of the next generation of future leaders, our students. Please visit our website at FTWarriorEF.org. Again, FTWarriorEF.org, to learn the many myriad ways that you can support the Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation with your time, talent, and monetary gifts, as we work hard to promote the teacher grants who in turn inspire and spark the innovation in our wonderful students here in Franklin. We are paving the path for a better tomorrow for our students. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. All donations are tax-deductible as permitted by law. Make your mark on the future. Please join us. Thank you.
That was the other grant. And thank you again, Reverend Dr. Jackson, for your organization's support of our district. Our board has a certificate of appreciation for your organization as well. And if there are any other members of the Foundation here, you want to be part of the picture, I'd like to take a little picture in front. And thank you all.
So, thank you, Reverend Dr. Katina Joy Blackman Jackson. And thank you to McAfee Road School, and thank you to the Junior Classic League. And I'm sure Mr. Grippo feels left out from not being able to be part of your reading group or your gardening group at McAfee. So I'm sure you have something to say on that, Bill. But we all appreciate your support for the Franklin Township Warrior Education Foundation, and it's an amazing organization, and it is truly, like, you can't tell what the grant money is doing. Is the teacher more excited in delivering the product or the program or coming up with the ideas? Because a lot of really great ideas that our teachers have come up with. So for that, we thank you very much. And thank you. And do you have any, anybody want to say anything? John, since you're on?
I would love to say something. Of course, it'll be a shameless plug, because the more, the more we raise, the more opportunity we have to support those wonderful ideas and those wonderful projects. So that's the whole intent. That's what the Foundation works so hard to do, is raise money up to $23,000 now this year. It's probably the biggest, I guess. You just made mention of that, Dr. Jackson. That's probably about the biggest bankroll that the Foundation has had to date. So the more we can raise, the more we can give, and the more the Foundation gives, the better opportunity, or the more teachers who are supported with their unique ideas. So I think it's wonderful. I just want to thank you. I want to thank all the other trustees. I want to thank all of the other folks who have supported the different events, because without them, we wouldn't be able to see what we saw on the screen there. So, and thank you, Mary, for putting that together, because I know that was no easy chore, collecting all that information. But it was nice to see collectively how much impact in just two short years of being able to give grants the Foundation has made. So thanks again. Thanks to all.
By the way, the grant cycle opens in November and closes, I think, at the end of November. So grants will be awarded. You'll know if you have a teacher grant. So start thinking, because I'm sure you've got something. So for that, thank you, thank you guys very, very much. And now we are going to move on to our student representative. Kalen is a senior at Franklin High School. So welcome, Kalen.
Okay. Hello? Oh. Hello, I'm Kalen Platt, the student liaison, and this is the prospective agenda. So one, FHS will be celebrating Week of Respect from October 2nd through 6th. This will consist of week-long activities, including Spear Week and the return of FHS Courtyard Games. Two, Club Rush is being held September 28th and 29th with a focus on advertising for all clubs. Three, after-school clubs will start the week of October 16th, as well as the return of after-school buses. Four, the Homecoming Dance at Franklin High School returns on Saturday, October 14th, and the Franklin High School Gym at 6:00 p.m. Tickets are only $25 each and can be purchased in the cafeteria from Tuesday, September 26th to Wednesday, October 11th, during lunch and in the B306 suite. Five, JSA and the League of Women Voters will be holding a voter registration drive on Tuesday, October 3rd, during all lunches. Anyone 17 and older can register to vote. And six, the physical education classes look to support breast cancer awareness on Wednesday, October 4th, and Thursday, October 5th. Support with money donations are greatly appreciated. Donation jars will be out by the track, or you can see Ms. Zano. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. And now we are on to our superintendent's report. John?
Thank you. My report's relatively short. I have three items. First up, transportation. As mentioned last month, the Board of Education engaged a consulting group, Pupil Transportation Safety Institute, known as PTSI, to assist in auditing the district's transportation contractors. PTSI is working alongside the district's transportation staff as they work to develop a more robust auditing strategy. Also, as mentioned last month, PTSI is currently helping district staff to prepare a stronger bid specification to guide the process for rebidding current routes and all future routes moving forward this year, and in preparation for advertising a new multi-year to-and-from contract later this winter. In addition, the board, as noted on this evening's agenda, will be advertising for a second phase of work related to transportation services. The scope of work will include auditing the loading and unloading procedures at various schools, as well as providing ongoing coaching and mentoring for transportation staff, especially with regard to transportation safety. We hope to be in a position to award the contract next month, so that this vendor is ready to mobilize once the first phase of our auditing work is complete, which we anticipate will occur by the end of December. Claremont Road construction, just as an FYI, if you're not yet aware, the Somerset County Department of Public Works, unbeknownst to us, began a road paving project on Claremont Road Tuesday morning. We were unaware of the project, and unfortunately, we're not given any time by the county to make our families aware of the ongoing work. With that said, I was able to connect with a supervisor at the county level earlier today, who was able to provide some relief to us. I am being told that starting tomorrow, and for the remainder of the project, which is projected to last at least through the first portion of next week, the paving contractor has been told not to start work until 9:30 a.m., which means traffic flow in both directions should be unaffected during arrival times at Claremont and Franklin Park School, because that has been very challenging the last two days, to say the least, because it's an alternating pattern of traffic. So we're down to one lane on Claremont Road, which, you know, they're our two largest elementary schools, so that has been somewhat of a challenge. Again, thankfully, they are seemingly willing to work with us at arrival. However, unfortunately, the county hasn't informed me, they cannot interrupt work once it's started. So the day, so for the day, they will continue the one-lane alternating traffic pattern until 4:30, which is quitting time. So dismissal times at both schools will be affected, and I encourage you to give yourself plenty of time, if you're picking up a child, to get there. There's nothing we can do about it. It's a county project, and I'm being told this is how it has to be. So again, sorry for the inconvenience, but as I stated earlier, we really have no control over the project. The good news is, should be done by midweek next week. Looks like the forecast tomorrow is horrible, so they likely won't be out there. But the forecast for the beginning of the week looks pretty good, so I think they may be done by midweek, I'm being told, which means if there's a light at the end of the tunnel, that is it. FHS top 40%. When President La Court gives her report in just a moment, you'll hear that Franklin High School has made the U.S. News and World Report Best High Schools list. They honor and award and allow you to use their lovely recognition symbol, as you can see behind me, as long as you make the top 40%. I can only tell you that, at least in the most recent years, this is the first time that I remember us being named to that list. We climbed several hundred spots in the last five years. That has earned our way onto that list. And I wanted to thank the entire Franklin Township community for their continued support as we work to improve the school experience for all of our students attending Franklin Township public schools. And I guess I'll end with a "Go Warriors!" and congratulations.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm going to begin with a moment of silence. It's with deep sadness that I ask for a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Susan Ledner Parra at Franklin Park School. Ms. Ledner passed away earlier this month. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her, to her family, friends, and fellow warriors. Thank you. Regarding fine visual and performing arts alumni news, Kristen Seggio, daughter of Terry, Franklin High School class of 2015, booked the Broadway National Tour of Mean Girls for an 82-city North American tour, playing three principal roles, Ms. Heron, Ms. Norbury, and Ms. George. Kristen is on the road, but will be close to home at the State Theater on May 11th and 12th, 2024. So book your tickets. Malia Moon, class of 2020, booked the new musical Hell's Kitchen, playing young Alicia Keys at the Public Theater in New York. She opens for previews in October, in October, and here is an article about that musical, which is at warriornews@franklinboe.org. So if you know of any amazing success of our Warrior alumni, please let us know and share the good news. And speaking of which, actually, I'm sure that Bill can talk about this better, but his daughter, Mariah, was recently with her Tiny Words Project company, was at the VMAs amongst many other places. And she gave me a bracelet that says "Empower," that she gave to me at the football game. So I'm sure Bill can talk about that, too. Awesome news about Franklin High School. Actually, I'll get back to them in a second. You can get your band cards for Franklin High School, which give you a huge discount to a lot of local businesses that support the band parents, that support the kids. So we're always looking for ways to help. So you can go and find information on their Facebook group, Franklin High School Band Parents, and our volleyball, which is a big thing this year. Our junior varsity and varsity team are having their home game and rematch on October 3rd at 4 o'clock against Hightstown. So please attend. And now, some really awesome news about Franklin High School, which is why we have the plaque behind us. Earlier this month, we received word from U.S. News and World Report that Franklin High School's, did you just say all this? That Franklin High School, okay. So I'm not going to belabor it, but we got this really cool plaque, because we are in the top 40% of the 23, 24 best high schools. So we're really proud of that, and we're really making strides. And if you can't find something at Franklin High School that piques your curiosity, then you need to look harder, because there's something for everybody at Franklin High School. We're really proud of what we have going on at the high school. So I would like to present this to Dr. Solomon, the principal at Franklin High School. Go there.
Yes, this is an awesome, awesome acknowledgement by the U.S. News and World Report. We are so ecstatic. I was talking to the staff about what we were acknowledged for, and I thank them, you know. This is not something just happened in the last year or last two years, but we certainly have staff that's been there for a very long time and speaks to their efforts of the time and effort they put into what they do each and every day for our students and our school and our community. So I thanked our staff at our last faculty meeting. This is a team effort, and I think it's great to see the wonderful programming, the wonderful course offerings, the, all the things that we do to meet the needs of our students. And I'm proud of our school. We offer a lot of different things to meet the needs. As I looked into what the criteria was for the U.S. News and World Report, it talks about seniors taking AP exams, seniors passing AP exams, graduation rate, math and ELA and science proficiency on state exams. So this is heavy, heavy stuff, and we're doing, we're doing a good job with it. So I'm excited about that. But I'm competitive, and I look at numbers. I want to be the number one. And I also talk to the staff about that. So we're going to keep on striving, keep on pushing. There's a lot more work that we can do, and I know that our students and our staff can do it. So thank you for taking the time to acknowledge Franklin High School, and congratulations to all of our staff and students, because they're the ones that made all of this happen, too. So thank you.
So we are really proud of, you know, everybody's high school's our shining star, and actually, we have a really good high school, a lot going on, and we're really proud of it. Nishida, you got anything? Bill?
So on September 12th, the Safety and Security Committee met with myself as chair, Lori Maris, Sammy Shabon, Nancy, Dr. Ravalley. A lot of the discussion took place around the beginning of the school year, how our schools were opened successfully and safely, and got off to a good start for the most part. Dr. Ravalley informed the committee that there was a lot of roadwork going on in town, especially at McAfee at the town at the time, and he was able to, with the township, to divert that project for a while, so that project will take place in the spring. There's numerous road projects going on in Franklin which impact transportation, so the administration is working very well with them. The superintendent reported to the committee an update on pupil transportation safety institute project, which is very, very important in light of recent events, and he's keeping us informed on how that is progressing. The committee is in the process of reviewing the student safety data system annual report from last year, and Mr. Wilson will be given a report on that in future months. And finally, the committee reviewed the Student Assistant Coordinator's Fall Newsletter. Now, this is a newsletter available to all students, staff, and to the public through the district website. And this, you know, with all the talk and study about mental health, this is a great tool for the parents and the students to use. So we had a very dynamic meeting, and it ended about an hour after it began.
Thank you. Sammy, ready?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. So facilities met on September 26th at 6:03 p.m. In attendance were myself, Ms. Singh, Ms. Maris, Ms. La Court, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Banano, Mr. Valencia, Mr. McNamara, and Mr. Ellis. Transportation request. Dr. Ravalley presented a parent request for an exception to Board Policy 8600. The board committee reviewed the request and agreed the request for exception did not warrant full board consideration and directed the administration to respond to the parent accordingly. Updates, board member project updates. Mr. Banano provided an update on construction of the Franklin Warriors Health Center. Construction is complete, and the move-in process and state approvals are ongoing. Projected opening is for the first week of November. That's super exciting news. Facility use. The committee discussed the facility use applications appearing on the board's September 28th agenda, and the energy report. Mr. Ryan Ellis always gives a very lively report to the committee regarding the status of the Claremont Solar Project, which, for anybody who doesn't know, is saving us lots of money and is making us greener and better members of our community. So that's it. We wrapped up around 6:51, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Artiman, personnel?
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on September 20th. The meeting began at 6:02 p.m. In presence were myself as chair, Walter Jackson, Lori Maris, Nancy La Court, Dr. Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Schneider. We reviewed and discussed the following items. Personnel report, September 28th, 2023, number three, which is on the agenda tonight. The report includes appointments for teachers, paraprofessionals, food service workers, assistant school business administrator, substitute safety, custodians, food service workers, and nurses. Additional appointments include 2023, 2024, sixth and seventh section, high school and middle school extracurricular, and club advisors, and horizontal movement. An affiliation agreement with Seton Hall University was reviewed by Mrs. Schneider in support of their counseling intern students. For the good of the order, Dr. Ravalley and Mr. Banano updated the committee on the status of the Warrior Health Center. The meeting ended at 6:53 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, curriculum?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on September 18th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. Present were myself as chair, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Hopkins, President La Court, Dr. Logren, Dr. Ravalley, and Mr. Shawn Thomas, the supervisor of health and physical education, was there. We talked about new business, and these proposals are for the board's consideration tonight. The first was to approve a water safety initiative for second-grade Franklin Township Public School students with the YMCA. This program will teach students water safety skills such as treading water and floating and general pool safety. We also would like to approve a course name change from the middle school ESL and ELA LDD courses to ESL ELA LLD courses. This change will remove redundancies in grade reporting procedures. Small change, but needs to be done. There were a couple discussion items with Mr. Shawn Thomas. We talked about the water safety program, and he presented it to us for our consideration. The meeting lasted a half hour, starting at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, policy?
Yes, the Policy Committee met on September 18th, 2023. Those who was present was myself, Nishida Desany, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. John Ravalley, Nancy La Court, and Mary Clark. The meeting began at 7:23. The committee reviewed and discussed the following policies. The revisions to these policies and the creation of new policy and regulations came about in response to changes in the state's requirements. Policy 6112, reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. Policy 6311, contracts for goods and services funded by federal grants. Policy 6115.04, federal funds, duplications of benefits and regulations. 6115.01, federal awards/funds, internal control, allowable of costs. The committee also reviewed revisions to the following policies and regulations. Policy 2520, instructional supplies, which was revised to reflect current best practices and policy and regulation 5200, attendance, which were revised to update terminology. The meeting ended at 7:42, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Does anybody have any liaison stuff they'd like to talk about? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to move, or new business?
Make a motion to close out the committees and move to new business.
Seconded.
Second. Excellent. All in favor?
Make a motion to move the following. R1, monthly reports. M1, minutes of board meetings. A1, travel and related expense reimbursement. A2, approve school-connected organizations. A3, week of respect, October 2 to 6. A4, fire prevention week, October 8 to 14. A5, school violence awareness week, October 16 to October 20. A6, Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15. A7, National Principals Month, October. A8, facilities use, A through D. A9, readoption of policy. A10, revised policies, first reading. A11, new policy, first reading. A12, new regulation adoption. A13, dental visit van, dental van visit. A14, settlement agreement with Altria Group. A15, donation. B1, warrants and payroll. B2, financial reports. B3, contract approval, A through N. B4, change orders. B5, award of RFP for a pupil transportation program audit and mentoring. B6, non-public school nursing services for school year 2023, 2024. B7, budget, 2024, 2025. C1, out-of-district students, 2023, 2024 school year. C2, field trip destinations. C3, field trip applications. C4, Franklin YMCA partnership. C5, course name change. C6, intent to apply for grant. P1, salary allocations. P2, personnel report number three dated September 28, 2023. And P3, employment contracts. Once again, motion to approve R1, M1, A1 through A15, B1 through B7, and C1 to C6, and P1 to P3.
Can I get a second for that, please? Seconded by Nishida. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I have a comment here. The A14 settlement agreement, I guess I would like to table that, because it's not been presented. I haven't read it. I'm sorry. The A14, the settlement agreement with Altria has not, I don't see that in our documentation. I haven't read that. I don't want to vote on it tonight. Can I make a motion to table that till next meeting? Would that affect anything here?
It will. It was presented, it's the same agreement that we had to re-approve, because I had to file, I have to file a second paper. This is with Juul. It's a class action lawsuit that was filed on behalf of the district. The settlement amount is $28,000. I mean, it's a little less than that. I think it's 27 and change, but 28,000. And of that, Franz Group will get fees, and so we'll probably, I think the estimated cost, or the estimated award to the district is 15-ish, 15,000-ish. We're one of about 600 districts nationwide that are involved, and we got in a little bit later than other districts, so they also do it by tiers. So you're certainly welcome to table it. I mean, that's up to you. It will affect us in the sense that I won't be able to file the paperwork on time, which means I don't know if we will, you know, jeopardize our $15,000. Didn't cost us anything to be part of the class action lawsuit, and it was recommended by Parker McKay, our attorneys, who said, hey, this is a class action suit. We are advising a lot of our clients to jump in it, and we did it a little more than a year ago, and actually, if you recall, maybe you didn't recall, at the time, we had to decide to go forward with it. There was a presentation in closed session about it, so, but that is the settlement. The settlement, and I apologize, I thought the number was on here, but the number is 28,000. But of that, like I said, a portion of that, and a decent slice, comes out for all the other fees and whatnot. But again, it didn't cost us anything in the money. You know, we had agreed at the time when we did this that any money we could put toward our anti-smoking, anti-drug effort at, you know, that our student assistance counselors pursue all the time would be found money and good money for them to use, and since it didn't cost us anything to get involved, we thought it was wise for us to move forward at the time. So again, you can certainly table it. That's basically all you're going to get, because that's what the agreement says. It says we can't go on and sue them ourselves. That's the other piece.
That's good enough for me.
Thanks. And again, I'm sorry, I had thought we had put the settlement amount in there, but for the rest of you, it was in my memo, and we had talked about it previously. Actually, we thought we would get a little bit more, but unfortunately, we ended up with just 28,000. But hey, it didn't cost us anything, and, you know, we'll end up clearing probably around 15,000, so good for us.
Anything else? Dennis?
No, I'm good.
Mike?
No.
Sammy? Nishida? Bill?
Any council comments?
No? Do you have any discussion on the agenda items?
I don't have any agenda.
Okay. Artiman? Can you do roll call, please? Wait, before you do that, I'd like to just point out that A15 thanking the Iola Foundation for a $10,000 grant for the Franklin High School Pace Club, and what's the other one? B7 is not the budget, it's the goals and the tentative budget calendar, so just so people know that now. Can you do roll call, please?
Mr. Sai?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes to everything, and I'll abstain from C4, because I work for the YMCA.
Yes.
Yes.
What about me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. (laughing).
Great. And now we are on to comments from the public. Can I get a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Sammy, seconded by Nishida. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, agenda items, or I'm sorry, public comment on any topic.
Madam President, since there's no public comment available, I'll make a motion to close it.
Okay, motion to close public comment by Dennis, seconded by?
Seconded.
Everybody, all in favor? Oppose? Okay, public comment on any item is now closed. Now we're on to good of the order. Bill, do you have anything for good of the order?
Yes. I was kind of wishing that the McAfee people would stay here, but today was a wonderful day at McAfee Road School. Iconic teacher Susan Lucheski, or Sue L., as many of you know, retired today. It was her last day, and the staff had a breakfast, and after school, they did a clapout. Sue is an exemplary teacher, a legend in Franklin Township for her generosity, her educational leadership, her compassion for the community. I've worked in, you know, as principal of McAfee for 10 years, and I've never met a teacher with such deep commitment to her students, both in the school and out of the school. So, you know, we recognized her today, and it was, it was a great day for McAfee, and she is a role model for any teacher in Franklin Township. That's it.
Okay, Nishida, you have anything?
I wanted to congratulate Dr. Solomon and the hard work that the teachers put in, as well as the cabinet and all the administrators, that we were able to achieve the top 40. But I really want to thank the students. They really are taking in and working towards their best. I also was really thankful that we got to see what Franklin
Now, we're on to good of the order. Bill, do you have anything for good of the order?
Yes. I was kind of wishing that the McAfee people would stay here. But today was a wonderful day at McAfee Road School. Iconic teacher Susan Lucheski, or Sue L., as many of you know, retired today. It was her last day. And the staff had a breakfast, and after school, they did a clap out. Sue is an exemplary teacher, a legend in Franklin Township for her generosity, her educational leadership, her compassion for the community. I've worked in, you know, as principal of McAfee for 10 years, and I've never met a teacher with such deep commitment to her students, both in the school and out of the school. So, you know, we recognized her today. And it was, it was a great day for McAfee. And she is a role model for any teacher in Franklin Township. That's it.
Okay, Nishida, you have anything?
I wanted to congratulate Dr. Solomon and the hard work that the teachers put in, as well as the cabinet and all the administrators, that we were able to achieve the top 40. But I really want to thank the students. They really are taking in and working towards their best. I also was really thankful that we got to see what Franklin Warrior organization does. And now that I'm retired, I found many things that I want to volunteer for, AKA gardening. So, watch out, people. I may be knocking on your door. And I was able to, beginning of this month, go to the Health Center that others had talked about. Fantastic. This is, it's a game changer for the folks who work in this township, and really is going to be good for their families. Thank you for the initiatives that you guys come up with. And I can say that I'm very proud that this has been my sixth year being on the Board, and I think I finally have some guts to speak up. But I really admire the initiatives and the goals and the plans that many of you bring to the table. And this has been a really amazing group of people to work with because everybody's agreeable and want to do what is best for the community and for the students in Franklin. Go Warriors.
That was beautiful. Sammy?
Yeah, I agree with what Nishida said. I mean, I've had an opportunity to see other Boards in action in different areas, and they're not as, I guess, cohesive and united on, on sort of the work that they're doing. And so, we're all blessed. So, thanks for reminding us of that. I do want to congratulate Dr. Solomon. I mean, this is a heck of an achievement to climb that many spots in the past few years and to be top 40%. I mean, one of the things that Franklin Township, we always knew could do was to be top 40%. And I love your statement where you said, you're a competitive guy, and you want to keep going. And we're here behind you. Anything you need, I think as a Board, I speak for all of us, that we're going to do whatever it takes to keep climbing. Whatever you need, whatever we can do within the means of our 2% and whatever, you know, we're going to get done. And we're already doing several things with the Health Center and things like that, which I'm super, super excited about. Thank you, Dr. Ravalley, President La Court, and all the other folks for the Franklin Warriors. I'm shocked how much gets done with such a small amount of money. All those projects being funded, it's just, it's just really spectacular and impressive. I do want to make a plug for, for anybody on the Board, also, for the, a new group that we talked about a few weeks, a few months ago at this point, uniting with the Town Council to create the Franklin Food Insecurity and Safety Coalition, FISC. So, we're meeting on Monday. If anybody of the community or any of the Board members, I know Nishida is going to be joining us, and maybe others will be joining. But the goal at this point is to identify systemic things within our community at a food insecurity level that we can help to correct, not just put a Band-Aid on it, but actually get deeper into it. Dr. Ravalley has attended every meeting, and I'm very grateful for that. Our strategic plan, thank you to Dr. Hopkins for all the work that he did in leading that, really includes a lot of that in it. But this is just the beginning of that pathway that we set forth as a Board to start with the Town Council. And it's gotten a lot of momentum, and I'm excited about it. So, it's on Monday at 3:30 or so after the golf tournament with the food bank. Otherwise, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
So, the, there were lots of projects that we saw on, that Mary showed. The Township has Boy Scouts and Girl Scout groups. And I was wondering if we could have a list of the kinds of projects that were supported, but maybe are not going to have additional funds. And if it is possible to show them to the Girl Scout troop leaders, sometimes they are able to support, knowing that I had been running a troop for past 16 years. Many times, you know what somebody's looking for, and the troop is able to get it done. And they're so cute, and they can go ask for things, and they get what they ask for. So, we have collected lots of stuff for the students and kids in the township. So, I think I would be happy to take that list from you and see if I can figure out a way to still promoting and giving some stuff to the teachers that may not get additional funding from the grants. Thank you.
That's really nice. Thank you. Mike?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes, I wanted just to echo my congratulations to Dr. Solomon and Franklin High School. I always said that the, the, the courses, just like Dr. Solomon said, that the high school offer is phenomenal. I'm just going to keep beating the drum to encourage the parents to take advantage of it. Seeing, just keeping my eye on each graduating class to see where they are venturing off to via college, the workforce, the military. If you want it, Franklin has it. And if you find your lane, you will progress. Also, congratulations to the Warrior Foundation. Reverend Dr. Jackson, as always, did a spiritual job in her presentation. And it was always a joy to, to hear that presentation. And also, just, it brought glow over me just to see the young lady that I have seen grow up in front of my eyes, Emma Kasubu. To see her presentation is, like I said, as always, that Franklin does have it. If you want it, we will measure up to any and all. And just like Dr. Solomon said, and of course, like Sammy said, the Board members, we like a challenge, too. And we would encourage you in all facets to continue to push on and push hard.
Thank you. Arteman?
Okay. I guess the mic doesn't want me to talk today. I would say it's congratulations to everyone involved. Dr. Solomon, the administration team, the staff, the students, the administration. It's the collective teamwork that has been going on for years and years and striving. Ever since the news has come up, I have definitely gained a few pounds with joy and happiness. And, you know, there were times when you would say, no, our schools are great. We're doing great. And now, we have something to show and tell. And, you know, it's really an exciting time. And, you know, it's here. People need to know Franklin. People, we keep saying it. Mary does a phenomenal job with, you know, the communication. And our Franklin reporter tap into, they, you know, say a lot of things about Franklin. But I think, you know, here we are. We're, you know, spreading our wings. And on that note, on October 12th, I will be sitting on the Somerset County Business Partnership on a panel on inclusion. And I will be definitely talking about Franklin. And, you know, it's an opportunity for me to again talk about Franklin. And I keep talking about Franklin, what a town we are. And this December, I will be completing half of my year living in Franklin. So, I am a really proud product of Franklin. I feel myself as well. So, go Warriors.
Such positivity, and it's a great thing to end on. So, go Warriors. And we are adjourned.